Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the November nineteenth meeting of the Whitehall City Council. For the purpose of considering such matters that may come before, I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Really?
I got this.
Jujubees?
No, no, no. My mind drifted on to something else.
Okay.
Jujubees is something. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Heck.
Morrison.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
President.
Elmore.
Present.
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
President.
President.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent member. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The absent member has been excused. Next up, we have our approval of minutes for November five, two thousand and nineteen, Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to approve November fifth minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the November fifth, two thousand and nineteen Agenda and Regular Meeting minutes. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The minutes have been approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. And don't worry, you all will have another chance at this before, around the end of the meeting, just in case you want to wear that. Now, we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week. We have a number of items that will be introduced tonight with your consideration, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty, and our minutes are on file.
All righty, thank you, sir. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy did meet last Tuesday. There are no drafts or pending legislation. We will meet again next Tuesday in the back, six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Infrastructure Maintenance and Services. That's Chairperson Heck. She's unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, that committee did meet last Thursday. Their minutes, and their minutes are on file. They should also meet again next Thursday sometime after six thirty. Next, we have Public Safety. Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back on Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
All right, thank you. And finally, we have Parks and Recreation. Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week, and our minutes are on file. As a front of reminder, the YMCA opens this Friday morning. Grand opening is at ten a.m., and we'll meet again next weekend in the back.
All righty, thank you, sir. Now, it's time for our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Bibby.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. City Attorney's Office is currently underway going over to Whitehall Yearling High School, teaching the Legal Rams for their mock court competition. Interesting fact pattern this year. They are arguing a First Amendment case about a person exercising their Second Amendment rights. So, it's one of those things where it is very contentious. I always look forward to going over to the Legal Rams and teaching the kids, just from the vantage point of teaching them what the law's about, teaching them about the Constitution, teaching them about civic duty, and hopefully playing a seed to where someday, one of those students might be sitting up here in City Council, or maybe the mayor of Whitehall at one future point. So, I just wanted to report that to council.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have our City Auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report other than what you have before you.
All right, thank you. And next, we have our Treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no official report this evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in council office since our last meeting, and we had the Auditor's Expense Report for October two thousand and nineteen, the Auditor's Bank Report for October two thousand and nineteen, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Report for October two thousand and nineteen, and ending with the Auditor's Revenue Report for October two thousand and nineteen. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a transfer of one hundred percent stock ownership of the D five, D six liquor permit for Tripp Global Chance LLC DBA Players, forty-three eighty East Main Street, Whitehall, Ohio, four-three-two-one-three, from Frederick and Tegmeyer to Frederick and Tegmeyer Trust and Rhonda Bonzo Trustee. We also have received the agenda for the November thirteen, two thousand and nineteen meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we have received the minutes of the October nineteen, two thousand and nineteen Park and Recreation Commission meeting. Those are all the Communications, Petitions, and Claims. That brings us to our verification of copies this evening. I'd like Ms. Aug to call the roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. All righty, we will begin our ordinances and resolutions, and we will start with third readings. We do have one item under third reading. It is Resolution fifty, twenty nineteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement and accept title to parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-five-four-one-four-zero-zero from Empowering Columbus LLC located within the city of Whitehall, and pay all fees associated with the transfer of property.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution fifty, twenty nineteen, and move for its adoption.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Resolution fifty, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Resolution fifty, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. It's the only item we have under third reading. That brings us to our second reading items, and we begin with Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars from unappropriated monies in the General Fund one-on-one to the income tax refunds expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance one-twenty-four, twenty nineteen. It's amending section one-eight-four-point-zero-three of the codified ordinances titled Definitions and Declaring an Emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. That brings us to our first reading items for this evening. We begin with one-twenty-six, twenty nineteen, making appropriation for current general fund expenses, street expenses, and state highway materials expenses during the period from January one, two thousand and twenty, to December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, in total sum of thirty-six million, nine hundred, thirty dollars, three... Let me back up here. Thirty-six million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred, seventy-three dollars and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. We move on to Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, authorizing and approving the following supplemental appropriations from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the purse expense account in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, has been amended.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend rules on Ordinance one-twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the self-funded health insurance expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen, and amend as read.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Bailey and a second from Mr. Rodriguez to amend Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, as read. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, authorizing and approving the following supplemental appropriations from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Ohio Police and Pension expense account in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-eight, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Move to adopt. Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Resolution fifty, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. It's the only item we have under third reading. That brings us to our second reading items, and we begin with Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars from unappropriated monies in the General Fund one-on-one to the income tax refunds expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-one, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the self-funded health insurance expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen, move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-nine, twenty nineteen.
Move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments?
Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Move to adopt. Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one-twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes. Ordinance one-twenty-three, twenty nineteen, has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance one-twenty-four, twenty nineteen. It's amending section one-eight-four-point-zero-three of the codified ordinances titled Definitions and Declaring an Emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. That brings us to Ordinance one-twenty-four, twenty nineteen. It's amending section one-eight-four-point-zero-three of the codified ordinances titled Definitions and Declaring an Emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. We move on to Ordinance one-twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, authorizing and approving the following supplemental appropriations from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the purse expense account in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one-twenty-seven, two thousand and nineteen,
Next, we have Ordinance 124, 2019. It's amending Section 184.03 of the codified ordinances titled Definitions and Declaring an Emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. That brings us to our first reading items for this evening. We begin with 126, 2019, making appropriation for current general fund expenses, street expenses, and state highway materials expenses during the period from January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020, in total sum of $36,933. Let me back up here. $36,933,373 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. We move on to Ordinance 127, 2019, authorizing and approving the follows following supplemental appropriations from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the purse expense account in the amount of $75,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 127, 2019, move for its suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 127, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 127, 2019. Move to adopt. Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 127, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 127, 2019 has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance 128, 2019, authorizing and approving the following supplemental appropriation from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Ohio Police and Pension expense account in the amount of $65,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 128, 2019, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 128, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 128, 2019. Move to adopt. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance 128, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 128, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 129, 2019. It's authorizing and approving the following general fund appropriation transfers in the amount of $52,600 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 29, 2019, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 129, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 129, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Ordinance 129, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 129, 2019 has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance 130, 2019. It's making and approving a supplemental appropriation of $30,105.90 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the street lighting expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 130, 2019, move for suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 130, 2019. Questions or comments? Do you comment? Questions? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 130, 2019. Second. I didn't hear anything. Did you say? Move to adopt. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Ordinance 130, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll. Get us out of this.
Morrison. Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 130, 2019 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 131, 2019. It's making an appropriation for certain special revenue, internal service and fiduciary accounts for the calendar year 2020 in the total sum of $15,758,912.32 and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. That brings us to Ordinance 132, 2019. It's amending 135.161, Title Capital Improvement and Project Fund and declaring an emergency. That is being read by title only. After that, it is followed by Ordinance 133, 2019. It's amending 135.18B, Title Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Fund and declaring an emergency. That is being read by title only. Next, we have Ordinance 134, 2019, amending 135.24B of the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Next up, we have Ordinance 135, 2019, amending 135.22, Self-Funded Insurance Trust Fund and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is also being read by title only. Now, we come to Ordinance 136, 2019, approving additional Broad Street and Hamilton Road right-of-way in the city of Whitehall and authorizing the execution and delivery of a platte in connection with the same and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Ordinance 136, 2019, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 136, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 136, 2019.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance 136, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 136, 2019 has been adopted. Next, we now move on to Ordinance 137, 2019. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $100,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the self-funded health insurance expense account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Now, we come to Ordinance 138, 2019. It's making a supplemental appropriation of $41,514.58 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund and authorizing the distribution of the portion of the total service payments attributed to each TIF to the affected vocational school district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund in the amount equal to 100% of the property tax payment the vocational school district would have received of $41,514.58 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 138, 2019, and move for a suspension of all rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for... to introduce and suspend all rules on Ordinance 138, 2019. Questions or comments? All right, Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 138, 2019.
Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance 138, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 138, 2019 has been adopted. We now move on to Ordinance 139, 2019. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $20,042.25 from previously unappropriated money in a win-pity fund to the Air South One and Sunny account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 139, 2019, and move for a suspension of all the rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 129, 2019. Questions or comments? Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 139, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of Ordinance 139, 2019. Ms. Aug, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 139, 2019 has been adopted. That brings us to... That's all the ordinances we have.